Good morning. I will call to order the December 16th, 2021, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Administrator Schmidt, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Vice Chair Savas. First, our staff support today. Shannon Bays, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Council, roll call. Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Scholl?
Here.
Vice Chair Savas?
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Chair Smith is out of the office this week and will not be joining us today. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that and when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. As always, the public is welcome to sign up to testify. Registration for a public comment will close five minutes past 10:00 a.m. I would also like to remind all that, all participants, that elected officials and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Orders will be enforced during this meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you please introduce the first item?
Yes, Vice Chair Savas. First, we have COVID-19 updates. Philip Mason-Joyner, Public Health Director, will present. He is on Zoom. Philip, are you there?
Good morning, Gary. Yes, I'm here. Good morning, Commissioners. Glad to join you to provide the COVID-19 update for this week. Thank you, Shannon, for pulling up the slideshow. And if you could please go to the next one, I'll share an update on our weekly case and death data. So in Clackamas County, we have seen cases drop a little bit in the past week. Cases are at 433 and 16 deaths over the past week. Multnomah County cases were at 772 and deaths at 26 sadly. And then Washington County cases at 554 and 12 deaths. So as I just mentioned, our case counts have continued to be on this jagged decline. The forecast to show that that's just going to continue until, hopefully not, but unless any new potential information changes. But we were up a little bit last week. We're now down again this week. So that is certainly good news. There continues to be a lot of interest and attention around the Omicron variant, COVID-19. We are monitoring it really closely. It is still actively looked at by the federal government, by the state of Oregon, by us, by vaccine manufacturers doing research around the effectiveness of the current vaccines and the severity of this variant. At this point, it does look like the virus spreads more easily, but has mild or symptoms. So that's very good. We're certainly concerned about severe illness, hospitalizations, and deaths. That was something that the last variant of concern, Delta, had, which is still the dominant strain here in Oregon, but Omicron is now here in Oregon. The first three cases of this variant were detected this past week in our neighboring counties of Washington and Multnomah. So we certainly know it's in the community. We'll be watching it very closely, seeing what the impacts are, informing the board of anything significant, and the community, of course. Washington State, our neighbor to the north, is seeing a pretty steep increase this week. So we're concerned, we're not alarmed, we're watching it closely. The number one thing you can do is get fully vaccinated. If you're eligible, get that booster. That's really the key action you can take to help us as a community, as a county, as a state, to address any of the potential adverse impacts from the virus moving forward. It is the holiday season here, and we know folks are gathering and celebrating and wanting to do it safely. So as I mentioned, vaccination being one of the most critical tools we have available to protect yourself and others from COVID-19. In terms of precautions, we, from a public health perspective, really want to recommend for the community, as you begin to think about your plans and celebrate, keep your gatherings as small as you can. If you do gather indoors, having access to a large ventilated room is really important. You know, if that's not available, mask wearing is really effective and important to help slow spread, especially if you have higher-risk folks that you'll be gathering with. You want to limit your interactions with other people, reduce your potential from exposure to keep them safe as much as possible so COVID doesn't disrupt and negatively impact your plans. And then continuing to be flexible, as we've had to be for close to a year now, be flexible with your plan, communicate openly and honestly. If you're not feeling well, please, please, please cancel, reschedule, adjust your plans for your celebrations to keep those around you safe and healthy. And while it is the holidays, there are still vaccine clinics happening, you know, on the end of the calendar year, continue to want to promote. There is a lot of demand right now. The easiest thing you can do is go to getvaccinated.org.gov. I really encourage folks to register on that site. You'll get alerted either through a phone call, a text, or an email when an appointment in your area conveniently located is available to you, so you do not have to spend a lot of time and effort trying to search independently for an appointment or have to travel a far distance. It really is a wonderful resource that's available. And if you have technology issues, our call center will be open throughout the holiday season. Give us a call at 503-655-8224, and we will help you get access to a local appointment. And that is all I have for my briefing today. Thank you very much.
Philip, before you go, Commissioner Schrader has a comment or a question, I believe?
Yeah, Philip, I had a question about rapid testing. Is that easily available in pharmacies? I know oftentimes it isn't considered as accurate.
There are rapid tests available. Most pharmacies, it's for purchase at $30 for a two-pack. So there's a cost there.
Okay.
You know, if folks want quick, easy access to appointment, I suggest they hop onto our Clackamas County COVID website.
Right.
Or call our call center that I mentioned. We can get you access to an appointment for the PCR test, which are really, really reliable, effective tests. You can get results usually in less than 24 hours.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you for that.
Commissioner Fisher has a question.
Yeah, thank you. So Philip, I see that we are below the 5% in test positivity rate. What is that as far as the levels of community spread? Are we below the substantial spread threshold at this point?
We are still just barely, barely, barely at that high-risk level, a little over 100 cases per 100,000, if that, the state's risk framework for reopening were still in effect. Test positivity is the other consideration. As you mentioned, that's gone down, so that's great. The state is exactly at 5% right now, too. So test positivity is nice to see that that has gone down. Once we get under that 100 cases per 100,000, we would be at the moderate risk level. So we're right at that moderate risk level if that, if that framework were still in effect. So certainly, it looks like we are headed in a good direction, and just want to see that continue to move forward.
Okay, and is that a pretty good indicator of how much community spread there is?
Yep, that's exactly why those two indicators were selected as part of that process, because it really does give you good insights into the level of spread across the community, around the virus, how rampant it is in the community.
Okay, so one thing I've been thinking about is if one is going to travel, or if we are, if they are looking at how safe are they in a community that they are traveling to, looking at those two indicators across the country is probably a good, a good thing to do.
That is a wonderful point, Commissioner Fisher. If folks are traveling, the CDC does have those two sets of data on their websites. You can look it up for every state and a lot of the cities around the whole country. You can look it up, and you can see in terms of the level of transmission, and that can inform some of the actions you take. Maybe the state doesn't have a mask requirement, but you may want to wear it, because if you're a higher risk, if you're traveling to a place that has higher level of community transmission, you want to take all the precautions you can to keep yourself healthy and safe, so you know, COVID-19 doesn't impact your travel plans.
Yeah, that's excellent. Thank you for that. I know when I went to Atlanta for a seminar, I was looking through to see what was happening in Georgia, and that was, that was helpful to, to get a sense from that. And then just a last question. In our report, there was some pretty good detail about monitoring the virus through the wastewater. And I'm interested to know how that will be systemized into our response, and if we will be continuing to get updates as to what that is yielding. And I don't expect you to answer all that now, but I just want to tap that for the future, because I think that's a pretty great way to look at what's coming. And when you look at what's happening across the world right now with Omicron, it is spreading very quickly where it's going. And I expect when we come back in two weeks, we're going to have a different kind of world than we have right now, possibly. So thank you, Philip.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions. Thank you, Philip. Gary, next?
Yes, thank you, Philip. Next, we have a presentation, A Year in Review: Accomplishments 2021. Dylan Blaylock from Public and Government Affairs will present, and I believe we have a video to share. Welcome, Dylan. Go ahead.
Can you hear me, or is this on?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. Good morning, Vice Chair Savas, Commissioners, County Administrator Schmidt. I am Dylan Blaylock with Public and Government Affairs. Great to see you in person this morning. I have the pleasure of introducing the 2021 Year in Review video. It's been a busy and challenging year, but it's always important to look back at the many great achievements and successes that Clackamas County has achieved on behalf of its residents. This video relay is just some of those. Again, these are just some of the successes this year. I'd also like to point out that the video includes successes in all five of your strategic priorities per the Performance Clackamas Plan. Unless there's any objection, we are going to be sharing it out on social media and our other channels soon. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Dylan, and the PGA team for creating that wonderful video. That was nice. It's a great reminder of the broad range of services we provide here and the successes Clackamas County has achieved during a very challenging and quite unpredictable year or two. Many thanks to our dedicated staff and for those who made those accomplishments possible. So any comments from my colleagues?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't get to that fast enough. But boy, did anybody feel like, wow, that's just so much. I feel like I want to take a nap. It was very well done, and yeah, we are doing a lot. Feels good.
Sometimes the things like, some things, you know, we don't move fast enough on, or we don't have the opportunity, we got to realize, take, take in account the things that we have done, that we do do. So we take it for granted. So, yeah. Commissioner Scholl?
Thank you. Dylan, thank you. And thank you to the folks that work with you to make that video. And I also would like to say thank you to each and every member of the Clackamas County staff, contractors, and our nonprofits, who all worked hard to make us successful this year. Thanks, Dylan.
Great. Thank you, Dylan.
Great. If I don't see you, if I don't see you, happy holidays to each of you and your families. So, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Dylan, I do have one question. I'm sorry, Dylan, just, so are we sharing that with NACO, National Associations? Do we, do we have like a conduit where we can?
Um, we can. I mean, I'm happy to go ahead and, yeah, we can talk offline.
I think we should need to make them aware of things here.
Sure.
I've seen some of the other commissioners nationally do that, and it actually gets out to everybody. It's kind of, kind of a neat thing to do.
Okay, I'll get in touch with Tracy.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you all.
Next, Commissioners, you have a public hearing, which is an approval of a board order for the annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number 1, CL 21-006. Ken Martin is our county's Boundary Change Consultant. He will present. Welcome, Ken, and go ahead.
This is a 16-acre annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number 1. It's located in Happy Valley. This is actually a proposal by the Water Authority to build a new headquarters building, and the district has the availability of sewers to the site, and we'd recommend approval.
Any questions? Thank you, Ken. Any clarifying questions or comments before I open the floor to public comment? Okay. Seeing none, I will now open the public hearing, and I will check for blue cards on this particular topic. And I do not see any on this. And I will ask again, anyone wish to comment? Anyone online, Shannon?
There is no one registered to speak on this item.
Okay. I will, so I will now close the public hearing, and I'll ask for a motion.
I move for approval of a board order for the annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number 1, CL 21-003.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Scholl and seconded by Commissioner Fisher. Any other comments or questions?
Yes, Stephen, on the agenda it says 006, but in the script it's 003. Actually, Ken, do you know the exact number?
Six.
Six. I'm sorry, the script is incorrect, so I want to be clear. It's CL 21-006. So noted. Sorry about that, Commissioners.
And the second approves that amendment? Mr. Fisher? Okay. So it's been, the motion's been amended to reflect, it's CL 21-006. And any other comment? Shannon, could you please take the, take the roll?
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Vice Chair Savas?
Aye. Great, the motion is approved. Gary?
Great, thank you, Ken. Next, Commissioners, is the consent agenda. Shannon, would you please read the consent agenda?
Health, Housing, and Human Services. Approval of Amendment Number 3 to the Clackamas Ambulance Service Contract. This amendment signifies the intent to develop a performance-based contract amendment. There is no fiscal impact. Approval of the 2022 Revenue Agreement with Oregon Health Authority for the operation and financing of community mental health, addiction treatment, recovery and prevention services, and problem gambling programs. Agreement value is $8,383,001.70, funded through the state of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Fire District Number 1 for the Project Hope program. Contract maximum is $31,090, funded through University of Baltimore, combating opioid overdose through community-level initiative grant. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Multnomah Education Service District for Medicaid Administrative Claiming Coordination Services. Contract not to exceed value of $10,000. Funding is provided by the state of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development. Approval to apply for a Community Development Block Grant to install a rectangular, rapid-flash beacon at the Southeast Park Avenue/Southeast River Road intersection, requesting $127,680 in grant funding, with $31,920 match, funded through County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Approval of intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation, Transportation Safety Division, for the purposes of Safe Communities Grant Renewal. Grant award is $50,000, with a grant match of 20%, funded through the Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation, Transportation Safety Division, for the purposes of pedestrian safety, marketing, and enforcement campaign. Grant award is $20,909.04, with a grant match of 20%, funded through the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a Federal Lands Access Program, FLAP, Project Grant Agreement Amendment 001, with Western Federal Lands Highway Division for the Low-Low Pass Road Stabilization and Surface Preservation Project. Overall project cost estimate is $4,052,403, funded through Federal Lands Access Program Funds of $3,241,922, with a county minimum match of up to $371,061. County overmatch limit of up to $439,420, funded through the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number 1 to Contract Number 2137 with DKS Associates, Inc., for the Clackamas County Regional Freight ITS Project. Amendment Number 1 adds $143,881.26, for a new total not to exceed value of $414,015.23, funded through federal funds, with a $15,803.61 match funded through the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Finance. Approval of a resolution acknowledging the financial statement findings for fiscal year 2021 and describing corrective action related to Clackamas County Service District Number 5 in accordance with ORS 297.466. Elected Officials. Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes. Approval of a resolution to delegate signing authority of sensitive documents to the Chair of the Commission and the County Administrator to sign on behalf of the county and its service districts. Approval of 2021 to 2023 Victims of Crime Act and Criminal Fine Account Non-Competitive Program Grant. Total grant is $14,446,005, with no in-kind match. Funded through Oregon Department of Justice, no county general funds are involved. County Council. Approval of Amendment Number 3 to Lease Agreement with Oregon State University Farmer-to-Farm Program. This amendment extends the program to August 31, 2034. There is no fiscal impact, no county general funds are involved. Technology Services. Approval of a purchase of broadband expansion supplies from Power and Telephone Supply Company. Total contract value is $317,418.75, funded through American Rescue Plan Act project funding. No county general funds are involved. Disaster Management. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Colton Fire District for COVID Vaccine Administration. Contract maximum is $150,000. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon State Police for the transfer of medical examiner equipment for mass fatality incident response, funded through Department of Homeland Security's Urban Area Securities Initiative, Grants Number 16-0170 and 17-0009. No county general funds are involved. That is the end of my list.
Yeah.
Good job, Shannon.
Thank you.
So, does any commissioner wish to remove any items from the consent agenda?
No.
Seeing none, can I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Scholl.
Martha, go ahead.
Okay, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, it's been moved to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, moved, so it's been moved by Commissioner Schrader and seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Any other discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Vice Chair Savas?
Aye. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Next up, the consent agenda for Service District Number 5.
Do you want to recess the board, please?
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. I will recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as Service District Number 5. And Gary?
Yes, so next is the consent agenda for Clackamas County Service District Number 5, Street Lighting. Shannon, would you please read the consent agenda?
Approval of a resolution acknowledging the financial statement findings for fiscal year 2021 and describing corrective action related to Clackamas County Service District Number 5 in accordance with ORS 297.466.
Thank you. Does any commissioner wish to remove any items from this short consent agenda? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
I move for approval of the Clackamas County Service District Number 5 Consent Agenda.
It's been moved by Commissioner Scholl. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Scholl to approve the consent agenda and seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Shannon, please take the poll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Vice Chair Savas?
Aye. The consent agenda is approved. Thank you so much. I will now adjourn as the Clackamas District Number 5 and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Next up is Public Communication. I have one blue card, and so Mr. Poole, is this your first time here?
First time here. First time here today. I should have gotten up earlier. Plus Poole, I live in Gladstone, but I always identify as being from Clackamas County. I do that for a reason. And of course, after all we've been through this year, some of it's just hard to even fathom. You know, you go back to January, and we got off to a bad start here. Lot of attacks on Commissioner Scholl. Next thing you knew, it was February, and while the economy and things were shut down, people were hurting, and the next thing you know, we're buried in ice. And if you look around, you can see broken trees and branches and things coming down that are the result of that storm. And then you move ahead, and we had a good budget process this year. We didn't overspend. I, I was pleased to see that where things needed to be trimmed, they were trimmed, and very awkward for anyone to project revenues, even though property taxes were up. A lot of difficult work there. So I sometimes criticize the politics and some of the things that are done here or don't get done here, but the, the budget you're operating under is certainly an improvement over what you inherited. I'll just, and when I say budget, I should say fiscal policy and how we're doing things. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, trying to figure out how we're going to meet the need, but you're going to have another budget. need, but you're going to have another budget process before, you know, we're going to get down the road a couple of months. So I wish you well with that. I do want to comment very briefly about tolling, back to transportation. I think ODOT and Metro have been very disingenuous with us. I'm very troubled by the lack of clear numbers coming from ODOT about what tolling will generate, what the cost might be for the Abernathy Bridge. All of those projections were in the early documents. And obviously, the costs and all of the work had a basis somewhere. But if you go to ODOT's website, as I've mentioned before, and you look to the part that answers the question of what will the tolls be, and the answer is, you won't be surprised. That's not an answer. And people are surprised. Also, there's a lot of confusion about tolling because it can be used to finance capacity, add a lane to the Abernathy Bridge, for example. It can't pay for all of the other upgrades. So there's a way tolling factors into this, but overlaid on that is the ultimate plan to have a permanent tolling and pricing, that variable pricing, to create a fund that can be used for things other than actually adding capacity. And of course, Metro loves the idea, and I'm just suspect of it. So thank you, everyone. I probably will be here next year. It'll be my first time next year.
See you next year.
Thank you. Shannon, could you please moderate the public communication via Zoom? And do we have some commenters?
Yes, we do.
Please proceed.
Heather Ray, you are up first. Please unmute yourself, state your name and residence. You have three minutes.
My name is, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks. My name is Heather Ray. I live off of Ina Avenue in unincorporated Clackamas County. And this is the first time I've ever commented at a Commissioner's meeting, so, but longtime voter. And I'm here today to make a comment on a new service that's in our area, a new business called Ridwell. This company recycles things that our regular trash haulers do not take in the recycling bin. Most people just throw this stuff in their regular bin, things like batteries, plastic film, clamshells, other kinds of things on a rotating basis. It's $14 a month. I just signed up for it and then my first pickup day was supposed to be tomorrow. However, I received an email saying that because of county code restrictions and some contract language between the trash haulers and the county, that I will be unable at this time to have this service. And I just wanted to make you aware of this situation if you're not already. I don't know if the county has heard about this or had any business with the company named Ridwell, but it seems like a good company and they're very transparent about what they do with their, the stuff that they collect. And I have a lot of neighbors who would like the service to recycle things and keep them out of the landfills, the plastic out of the groundwater, et cetera, et cetera. It's already a very popular service in Portland. And I spoke with a representative from Ridwell yesterday who said that they are more than willing to comply with any kind of permits they need to get from the county to make this possible, this service possible. And that's all I have to say. I want to use this service and I live in unincorporated Clackamas County and I hope that you will make progress with this company so that I can recycle some things instead of throwing them in the trash. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up?
Next up is Gerald Murphy. Gerald, please unmute yourself, state your name and residence. You have three minutes.
My name is Gerald Murphy, or Murph. I live up in Rododendron. I'm a member of the, or Vice Chair of the Clackamas County Planning Commission, also Vice Chair of the Sandy River Watershed Council. And I'm here to announce that the Sandy River Watershed Council is dissolving. It's filed for dissolution and I have a letter I want to read to you. Dear partners and volunteers, the Board of the Sandy River Watershed Council is sad to announce the dissolution of the Sandy River Watershed Council immediately. Unfortunately, the 2020, 2021 were challenging years for the Sandy River Watershed Council. Staff losses, operations, under limited funds, and the restricted conditions associated with the pandemic led to the financial difficulties. Consequently, it became increasingly difficult for the Sandy River Watershed Council to fulfill its obligations. After extensive review and consideration, the Board voted unanimously to dissolve the organization. We want to thank all of our partners and volunteers that have interacted and worked with us over the years. The Sandy River Watershed Council has played a critical role for many years in successfully bringing diverse partners together to protect resources of the Sandy River Watershed. We would like to recognize all the volunteers who contributed their time, effort to help us make a significant difference to the watershed. Over 16,000 of you have volunteered with us since 2017. We hope Sandy River Watershed Council leaves the Sandy River Watershed in a better place for having been here. Sincerely, the Sandy River Watershed Council. I'm very sad and just totally dismayed at what has happened. We've tried very hard to keep this afloat, knowing the importance this is during the critical times that we're facing in water shortages, fish recovery, and wildfires. We play a huge role in this, but it is just something that we could not keep afloat. We had staff changes that we went, at the end of 2020, we went from a number of six on staff to 1.3. And trying to keep that going under restricted grants has really, really been difficult. So I want to thank Clackamas County, its agent, its departments that have taken such a huge role in our success in the upper watershed. Multnomah County has taken a huge role in the lower end of it and we hopefully will see something that fill our shoes. You know, there's always talk of something down the road, but this is something that's going to be deeply missed, I know.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention, though. We are saddened to hear that. My reflection on that, you know, I got involved in, on water issues, public involvement issues back 24 years ago and it didn't take me very long to realize the good work that the volunteers do and the watershed councils do in this county on behalf of our environment. And frankly, the reason why it's so important is because that, those watersheds really turn out to be our drinking water after their process. So watershed stewardship is really important to us. Thank you for bringing that again to our attention and I hope maybe we can, or they can at some point in the future reform. I know that's something that myself, Commissioner Schrader and I are pretty passionate about and so sorry to hear that. Next up?
Next up is Christine Kennedy. Christine, please unmute yourself, state your name and residence. You have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Christine Kennedy, resident of Lake Oswego, and I've lived in Clackamas County for seven years. I'm a retired healthcare professional. I just want to say to the Commissioners, thank you for your time and your considerations. This has really been a year like no other. I mean, I just, it has been a time where there has been political unrest and you have really done a lot to help create a healthier Clackamas County during all of these adversities. But we're not out of the pandemic. Public health drives the economy. I appreciated Philip Mason-Joyner's comments this morning. And personally, I am a proponent of the home testing and I have been testing before I interact with someone who is unvaccinated because that is what, that is how I get to interact with that person. I know it. I know at that moment that I am not shedding virus, so that gives me a lot of confidence. It is expensive and it's too bad it's not more widely available. Lot of new tools in 2021, but unfortunately, the promise of the vaccine has been sort of overridden by the development of all the mutations, particularly Delta. And I just probably, like many, many others, July was such a big disappointment for me when we thought we were out of it and yet it reemerged. So it's not the fact, it's not the vaccine, it's the virus. It's really important. The key is get vaccinated. Refer to our public health information. That is where you're going to get accurate information. I'm dismayed when I see a public, one of your fellow Commissioners posting something on social media that then results in criticism of your public health department and it's not corrected. I think that's shameful. I think Commissioners should not be referring people during the Commissioner meeting to other websites that are not supportive of your public health department. And I did pay my taxes this year and every one of those dollars is precious. So thank you very much. I hope that 2022 is a better year that we form peace and health. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
I just want to thank you Christine for that. Just to, if I can just share a few things that I don't think folks will mind. So my daughter's about, my second daughter's about to have her second child, so I just got tested again. I think it's my seventh or eighth test, I've lost count. And I got tested because it's a newborn in the family. I've been vaccinated and boosted, but I have traveled, you know, taking all the precautions. So I thought it was very important for me to at least get that. That's one of the reasons I asked Philip about the testing piece. I just, I went to Zoom Care where of course I paid for it, but it's where you get the test, how do you get it? Because you want to make sure that you're not bringing anything, especially with a newborn. And then I found out my English family, my older daughter, her little boy came home with, and they're not vaccinating children in England yet, but both she and her husband are vaccinated. And so her little guy came home with a very mild case, had it tested. I don't know if it's the Omicron variant or not. So they're lucky, it's behaving like a mild cold. My son-in-law and my daughter both got mild cases. They haven't told me of my granddaughter yet, but they're very lucky because those were, those were cases that, again, they were vaccinated. And even though children, you know, a mild case, but I guess I just want to tell people, you've just got to be careful, you know, even if you're vaccinated. And the vaccine, at least the things I'm reading from public health, which I think is extremely important, is that the vaccine oftentimes seems to mitigate the severity of it. And so that's been my personal experience with this. So I'm only going to have Christmas with one daughter this year, but it'll still be a Merry Christmas and we're FaceTime and I feel really lucky that they're not, at least with this, they're not severely ill. But I wish, I wish England would move ahead a little more quickly with vaccinating the kids because my two grandchildren would be old enough here in this, in this group. So listen, people agree or disagree with things, I get that, but I just thought that personal stories kind of help put a human's face to, to what we're facing. So thank you for letting me wax eloquent, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Shannon, anyone else?
Vice Chair Savas, that is the end of my list, thank you.
Great. That's, so that is the end of our communication. Gary, I believe it's your turn. Commissioner, County Administrator, update?
Thank you, Vice Chair Savas. Yes, County Administrator, update, that's me. I always like to share good news and I will do that again today. The Social Services Division of our Health Housing and Human Services Department has run a wish list campaign to help out families experiencing housing instability. This program helps provide holiday gifts to those children whose parents need a little assistance. Social Services case managers are able to provide gifts to 34 families and their collective 64 children ranging in age from newborn to teenagers. Our staff is currently sorting out the gifts and coordinating delivery in the next week to families in our housing programs and to those helped through the COVID Rent Assistance Program. All of the parents who are participating express gratitude and thanks to Clackamas County for these wonderful gifts that their children will be able to receive this year. So thank you to our staff for helping to coordinate that. Next, for our Transportation and Development staff, Julie and Dave of Sandy wrote, "On behalf of ourselves, my family, and our neighbors, we wish to express our gratitude to Code Enforcement Specialist Shane Potter for his handling of a code violation in our neighborhood. During the entire process, Shane was patient, empathetic, kind, even though at times I was stressed. He addressed a number of issues promptly and referred us to other departments or resources as needed. He made a drawn-out, difficult, and stressful situation seem solvable, and he ultimately did just that. I can't begin, I can't begin to tell you how life-changing it is for us to have peace and quiet restored to our neighborhood." So thank you to Julie and Dave of Sandy for sending that note in and to Shane Potter for his outstanding customer service to the public of Clackamas County, as do I believe all of our employees here at Clackamas County. Commissioners, as you know, this is your last business meeting for the calendar year. You will be on recess for the next two weeks, December 20 through December 31, 2021. You will return for business on Tuesday, January 4, 2022. Per the county code, I, as County Administrator, am authorized to sign agreements and contracts on your behalf. As I've said and I've told you before, I will do again. I will not sign anything unless it is absolutely critical. Otherwise, we will wait until your return in January. And then finally, as this is the last meeting, I of course just want to thank all of our county employees, over 2,500 county employees who work every single day to serve the public of Clackamas County. They do a fantastic job. It's been a very challenging two years for all of us and our employees. We're resilient and positive and professional and continue to serve the public and I thank them for all that they do. Happy holidays. Thank you. Vice Chair.
Great. Thank you, Gary. Next up is Commissioner Communication and I have up first Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Vice Chair Savas. Last meeting of the year, wow. And do we remember last year when we were sitting here thinking, 2021's going to be better? Well, it's, it's interesting to look back at the last couple of years. It's been quite, quite the journey. So a couple of things I wanted to mention, I think we all saw. I really appreciated Christina putting together all of our BCC emails that we got yesterday and we saw then a lot of concerns about Ridwell and lots of concerns about promoting sustainability and recycling and, and so I'm just hoping, I do know that we are haulers, there's a franchise agreement and there are rules and there are agreements and we have a very specific system in Clackamas County and I'm, and we won't have a chance to talk about this, but I'm hoping that when we get back from the break, we can have a conversation about that and so that we can have better understanding and hopefully before the end of today, our staff, our, our staff can work with our sustainability staff to come up with a response so at least the community members know that there, there's some complexity to this and we absolutely are not against sustainable practices in recycling, but we do have a system in place and we need to figure out a way to bring all of those who are interested into a system that exists and is fair. So I wanted to say that and Gary's shaking his head yes, so that's, that's in the queue. I also wanted to share with my colleagues and I did send, I had Kimberly DeSantis send an email to you while we were in our meeting today and I apologize, I couldn't get this email to you sooner, but it came to my attention this morning as I was reading. But it came to my attention this morning as I was reading our, our daily news comm, the article that was in the Oregonian regarding the settlement that we, the county entered into regarding Kamar. And as a commission, we have not talked about this. We have not talked about it publicly. I have a statement that is in your email that I want to present to all of you to let you know that I'm going to be making the statement. And if anybody would like to join in this statement, I welcome that. But I would just like to read it now. It's, it's very emotional for us as leaders in our community to go through the experience of seeing any child experiencing a sense of, of harm. And so I know we are committed to, to making things right. And in that light, I wanted to, to share this with my fellow commissioners. Feeling safe is one of our most basic needs. And right now in our community, too many people, especially our black and brown and non-white neighbors, do not feel safe. Kamar and his mother do not feel safe. And that is an injustice that is not fully addressed with the financial settlement. But I hope that it is a step forward in Kamar's journey recovering from this trauma. In order for all community members, black, brown, or white, to trust law enforcement to keep us safe, there must be accountability and a commitment to doing better. The county is a necessary part of that work. And all continue to be committed to improve public safety by investing in training for law enforcement and requiring true, meaningful accountability. This must be a top priority for our community leaders.
So I do have a question, Sonya, because I think it's a, I understand the statement and really, we don't want this to happen. Have we talked, has anyone talked to the sheriff, who I believe is also very committed to these values and also committed to making sure that her folks, her deputies are well-trained and, you know, whatever. Sometimes in law enforcement, I believe that what needs to continue to happen is more training in how to handle these kinds of situations. And I know that the sheriff is committed to that. So have we, have you contacted her to let her know?
Yes, well, I did. I did reach out to her this morning after I read the Oregonian article. And I let her know that I, I did reach out to, wanted her response, suggested that she share exactly what you're saying, and also let her know that, that I was going to make a statement.
Yeah, I think, I think it's our job to make sure they, that our, our law enforcement folks have the resources they need for, for really good training in all these sensitive issues. I, I did a training with them once, and I think the thing that was most striking to me was how they have to make immediate decisions almost split seconds sometimes. And it's, it's just, you know, and so, so the more training, the more opportunity to really, you know, sometimes they can't reflect the way some of us can reflect about how we do things, you know? And I, I just, I just think that that long-term is going to be the answer to this issue, really, is supporting them, you know? I think that, that they're dedicated. I know there's a lot of systems that we're going to need to be changing. I think we're aware of that. But let's make sure we're doing it with them together so they know that we honor their service. And we want our deputies and our folks, our public safety folks to be the best in the region in terms of how they manage really sometimes just really painfully difficult situations. So I just want to make sure that they know that, you know, we support them.
I have some comments on this, but I'm going to reserve them for my, you know, my, my comment period. So Commissioner Fisher, were you finished?
Yeah, I just wanted to just confirm with Commissioner Schrader that I think we're all on the same, the same page there. And what I want to be in the public discourse is that our commission cares about the youth in our community. We care. And that is missing from what, what has been stated. And that is a piece that is important. I, I was, I was concerned and disturbed about, about how we in Clackamas County reflected, quite frankly. And I wanted to bring this up with my colleagues because we've had these discussions. And I know that everyone that's on our commission has a real heart for our youth, and they don't want to see children traumatized, and they care. And we want the best future for our children and for Kamar especially. We, we, we have been concerned. So that didn't make it into the public discourse, and I needed to state it with, with all of you present. So, and this was our last opportunity before the new year, so.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher. Next up, we have Commissioner Shoal.
Yes. Good morning, Clackamas County. This week, from the state legislator, we received some good things that'll help Clackamas County. One of them is over $200 million to the state for continued rental relief. You might know that the Safe Harbor provision expired on 28 February. Now it's extended to 30 June. See the Social Services website for more information on rent relief. Also, $25 million was provided to fight illegal marijuana crime gangs. This problem is mostly in southern Oregon, but it can be in any county. And as most people know, Clackamas County is not the place to commit crimes. Our sheriff department, our police department, and our district attorney and his staff are on the ball 24/7, 365. And on cap and trade, like I mentioned last week, Governor Brown's draft executive version of cap and trade may come out in the spring, and I recommend that everyone look into it. Contact your state rep with your opinion. And if you're a business owner, do not hesitate to read up on the potential effect on your bottom line. And if it is approved, Clackamas County businesses will feel it, and so will our local, national, and international customers. On the Oregon National Guard, it's a happy day yesterday, a new ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new storefront of the Oregon National Guard in Wilsonville, on Wilsonville Road. Thank you to all the members of the Oregon National Guard for your service to the state and to the nation. And if you get a chance, stop by and say hi to the soldiers and airmen there at the new office. On Compassion in Action in Clackamas County. Now, last Saturday, I had the opportunity with Oksana to be a Santa's Helper to fill wish lists for hundreds of children from Clackamas County. Darlene has been a Santa's Helper there at Compassion in Action for 31 years. And what a great woman she is. And they're doing a wonderful job. You cannot believe the thousands of toys that are going out of that one place. Thank you, Compassion in Action of Clackamas County. And if you get a chance, see their website, donate, and help them out. On the Water Environment Services, yesterday, we had a great time at the Christmas gathering at Wes down here in Oregon City. And they received the Water Heroes Award, which I understand is only one of four given out in the nation this year. I was impressed with the, the staff, the camaraderie, and the spirit of the people at Wes yesterday. And thanks again for a great time, and Merry Christmas to everybody at Wes. On the Annual Meeting of the Association of Oregon and California Counties, I'll be in Roseburg tomorrow to represent our county in that meeting. And on the governor's race and politics in Oregon, I checked a couple of days ago, and there were 22 Oregonians filed to run for governor in our primary in May. Everybody needs to check that out, read up on them. And on this day in history, in 1773, it was a party called the Boston Tea Party that American rebels disguised as Indians threw 342 chests of British tea into the Boston Harbor, paving the way for the American Revolution. The takeaway? Americans do not like taxation without representation, be it 1773 or 2021. And I'd like to thank all the residents of Clackamas County who have participated in public discourse on issues affecting the people and businesses of this county, the state, and the nation. Thank you for your time and efforts this year. And also thank you to every member of the Clackamas County staff, to its departments, to our contractors and our nonprofits for getting us through a very difficult year. Happy holidays to each of you. And to all of you out there in Clackamas County, I wish you a wonderful Christmas and a new year where we are free to pursue our dreams in health and happiness and freedom. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoal. Commissioner Schrader.
Well, I've been talking a lot today, aren't I? Really sorry, guys. I guess I have more to say than usual. Holy, holy cow. Anyway, I, I want to give a shout out to Rod Cook and Fahid Brown and all the folks that are working on the Social Services issues as we, as we work towards, you know, doing wraparound services for the homeless in our community. They're working overtime. They gave an update. Was it Tuesday? I don't know if it's Tuesday. It must be Belgian, I guess. But I remember sitting there, listening to them, hearing them. They're doing a great job. And they need all the support we can give them as a commission. And I'm hopeful that we can get other departments maybe working with them in a way so that they can add some capacity to that because this is a big, this is a big issue for us. We, we are working very hard to do the right thing, but it's largely because of the staff people that we have that are working on it that we will be successful. So Merry Christmas to you guys, all of you who are working on that issue. We really appreciate it, and, and your dedication does not go unnoticed. I was at the, we were, a number of us, I think all of us, were at the Wes Water Environment Services event the other day. I do kind of have a soft spot for those folks because what they do is so critical. And it was a kind of a, a way to, to say to them, you are heroes. Because they really, really got an award because of how they handled the crisis of the ice storm, loss of power, right? Paul digesters going down, things. And they had to like be there 24/7 to make this happen. And they did it cheerfully. They are dedicated. They're also my most fun group that I like to hang with because they let me go on their entomology. And they actually have an entomologist that does the stream ecology. And usually when they go out, I say, hey, can I, can I come along? And the last time they said, well, you're so wistful about this. I said, yeah, some days I wish it was, I love what I do now. But it's a very kind, gentle world to be out there in the field with, with nature and creatures. Let me put it, let me put it that way. So they always give me a chance to do some field work with them, which I really, really appreciate it. And speaking of which, another thing I really appreciated is on our, I see Mike Bondi's in the audience today. And he's going to retire. Well, you've been retiring for a while, I think, Bondi, but we don't want you to retire. But, but you're from the North Willamette Research and Extension Center, which is under the auspice of the College of Ag Sciences. And basically, we today, under your umbrella, Mr. Madkour, we basically renewed the lease to 2034 for the North Willamette Research and Extension Center because agriculture is a huge piece of what we do in this county. And I pulled up your mission, Mike, because I think that, I think that's a Christmas present I can give you. The mission is to conduct horticultural crops research and to extend new knowledge to the horticultural industries and communities, particularly in the Willamette Valley. The location is just 20 miles south of Portland, provides growers with convenient access to research findings and extension service educational programs. The research is aimed at producing better quality crops at lower costs and with reduced environmental impact. Often, the quality or form of a product must be changed to meet the demands of domestic or foreign customers. Growers must change varieties and learn to grow what the market demands. Agriculture is Oregon's leading industry. Farming and its support industries account for 11% of the employment in Portland metropolitan area. And they seek to keep agriculture healthy and, and really to gain a large share for our Oregon markets and to adapt new crops to keep our production systems competitive, not only within the United States, but, but globally. So kudos to you, Mike. He was on Cooking with the Commissioner with me. Mike and I did that together. So take a look at that because Mike describes, we had a conversation about what the, what the Extension Center does. And also, you'll learn how to make some delicious eggplant. So there you go. Merry Christmas, everyone. I really have enjoyed working with you this past year. And in all my experience, though, this has been some of the toughest situations that we've ever faced. It makes a lot of other things that I think, that I think I've experienced seem, seem not, not quite so, not quite so dire. This, these past few years, we have faced significant challenges. So thank you for being my colleagues. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, safe travels. Give your kids hugs for me, okay? And have a good day. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. I have a few things to say today, being the end of the year and all. But, you know, the first one, the easy one that Commissioner Fisher first commented on was the Ridwell one. I think that came to us as a surprise to me. I didn't realize the existence and so forth. So I will, trust our staff will help guide that organization or that company into, and to make them aware of the systems that are in place, both at the county and the metro region and the state level, and all the regulations that go along with that. Waste, solid waste, is something that's regulated, and we abide by that. It's one of our core values here at the county. So we will, we'll definitely look into that a little bit deeper and see how we can get everyone into compliance. The, the other matter Commissioner Fisher spoke to was the, the issue with the young man that was featured in the article late yesterday that I read and on the news as well. And I don't want to get too, too deep into the, into the weeds on this, so to speak. And I totally respect everyone's role in this, the sheriff's role, our role, the community's role in this. And I do think we have to recognize that there is centuries, decades-long treatment of people that has not been equitable or fair. And whether that's based on the language people speak, or the clothing they wear, or the, the religion they practice, or the color of their skin, or whatever it may be, we need to be, we need to recognize those sensitivities and that they are impacted. So, you know, in this particular case, and if anyone's curious, I think it's, you know, there's a lot of public record, a lot, a lot of video that kind of explains, or I think people can surmise the context of it all. But, you know, I've had personal experiences in my upbringing and youth and seen discrimination. And so I experienced it firsthand and came to a lot of folks' defense, family members and friends close to me, not always successful coming to their defense. But it is very, very sad. Fortunately, in this case, no one lost their life in circumstances that I've witnessed, I've seen that happen. And I was actually criticized by so many people for saying, oh, that can't be true. That can't be true. And I just, I never forget the day that the Rodney King thing came out. And I said, see? It is happening. But that doesn't mean that, you know, when we have situations where, and in this case, I don't believe is the case, but with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, I don't believe this is the case, but there are. believe this case, but there are cases, you know, the George Floyd incident, for example, where, you know, there, you know, one bad actor, that, that being a police officer, his actions resulting in life, taking the life of another, that, that was clearly, that was clearly something that is, should not reflect on the good work that a lot of law enforcement does, and the training, and the god of the good training. We can always improve, and I think that we are in a state, in this country, and in this, and locally here, in our region, in improving how we train, how we treat one another, how we work respectfully from one another, and I know there's a, there's a goal that we get to equity, we advance equity so that people are treated fairly, and I think we can strive, and we will strive to do that. I think we've taken every precaution, we've taken every step to advance EDI in this county, every recommendation that's come from our staff, we have taken, and I know that a lot of our departments, including the sheriff's departments, are, are committed to that. I just don't want to make sure that in this particular case, that the good work that was done, in this case, should be recognized. And people might have differing opinions, but again, if you read, or look, or view some of the tapes and the videos, I think you'll get a better idea of the circumstances in this case. So it's, it's sad that people do, sometimes, people of color especially, fear, you know, fear perhaps in situations how they'll be treated, and we, we recognize that, but there's far more good in people that we have to recognize as well, so we need to strike that balance between recognizing the good and the well-intended versus, you know, the unfortunate circumstances where people's rights are violated and so forth. And again, in this case, I, I, I believe that, you know, people view all, all the material, I think they'll have a better opinion. It's unfortunate that the article that came out in the Oregonian, I, I don't think really put a clear picture to that, and I'm not criticizing the Oregonian, I'm not criticizing the media whatsoever, but it's, you can't put everything in there, it's hard to put video in there, but I, I believe it could have portrayed, it could have been portrayed better. But that said, I want, just want to close out with, we will strive, really frankly, to improve equity in this county, and again, I want to thank all of our staff, sheriff's office included, for all the good work that we are continuing to do to advance equity and make sure our policies are up to date and respectful of everyone. So on a, spinning to a positive note, I appreciated the video, I didn't expect that, that was a great video, talking about all the good work we do, and I just think about all the departments we have, and how, what a extraordinary year or two it has been. We have been through a lot, between all the storms, between COVID. I thought by now we wouldn't be wearing these. A year ago, I thought, well, the mask will be over, next year will be a good year, we won't have to wear these masks, as we, as it muffles our voice and our speech, it's, it's been, it's very, very, very challenging. But I want to thank everyone, the staff here at the administration of the county, every department for what they do, as we pulled through all these crises, you know, the ice storm, you know, what our road department did, what our folks at Wes have done, and went above and beyond the call of duty to perform, and I just thought it was just really significant. The fires, forest fires as well, the volunteers, people, the neighbors coming out, helping one another, just a lot of community, all of our volunteers, you know, our health staff trying to deal with the people that were hungry, you know, we had the opportunity to go out and deliver food and so forth to, to, to some, some members of the community that, you know, didn't really have the great means to, to feed themselves, especially during the ice storm. Our health staff trying to navigate that, our housing staff, the people that make everything fly, the people in the background that really don't get a lot of credit, you know, our folks in our assessors' office, the finance department, people that pay the bills, that keep the trains running on time, so much, in spite of all the emergencies we've had, we have truly been resilient. We have kept together. We may not always agree, we've been through a lot of emotional situations and difficulties, but I think we all in our hearts have the best intentions in trying to serve our constituents, our, our citizens as best as we can, as efficiently as we can. This time of year, I always think about our emergency responders, both C-Com, both search and rescue, that go out and rescue people in these, in these particular times, up on the mountain, or in rivers, and so forth. So thank you, thank you, thank you for all those, and, you know, safety is a primary concern for a lot of us, and, you know, can't, again, forget the local police departments, our sheriff's department, for the good work they do trying to keep people safe and being part, also being part of that search and rescue. The crisis really that probably keeps us up at night, and I know it's probably the biggest and largest regional crisis, has, has been really the houses, the homeless. We have people that are, are suffering, we are situated, I was just sad to read the news yesterday, to hear that the population, or the estimated population of the homeless is increasing, and a lot of us are unfortunately seeing that, realizing that, or predicting that, it will, it's not going to get, it's not going to get better anytime soon, and I have always been trying to hope that we can do what a lot of other states have done, and that is put more investment into mental health treatment, into drug and alcohol addiction, and with all these new monies that are coming in, I, I think we need to step up. This state has to advance itself from the bottom when it comes to alcohol, mental health, and, and drug addiction treatment, higher up the scale. We should not be near the bottom, especially in the crisis that we have before us. So I continue to call on my regional colleagues, elected other leaders as well, for, to, to help make that call, to ring that bell, to, to try to advocate for more investment in that area. I'm hoping that maybe that 5% set aside, if that contract's actually, the IGA with Metro is, is actually near completion, if that 5% set aside could be dedicated to a facility or facilities to, to treat and invest for those with behavioral health problems, alcohol, and drug addiction. And the other sad news was also in the report yesterday, that half the deaths in Oldman County of the homeless were, were meth-related. It's not the only drug out there, but were meth-related, so that's significant, and that just speaks to the fact that there's a huge, huge, huge need out there. I also want to thank those that are on the street, our nonprofits, the people that are volunteering to help feed, to help the homeless, everything else, the critical work that they do. It's really a community, it's, I, one thing I would say to after my 11 years here now, 11 years as a county commissioner, the outpouring and the, the good work that people are doing on behalf of those that are less fortunate is significant, and I think has touched me and all of us quite deeply. So with that, I wish everyone a merry, merry Christmas and a happy new year, happy Hanukkah, good, happy holidays, and we will see you all next year. We're adjourned.